I think so.
You're starting.
I think we have started?
We are starting now.
All right, we're starting. Good evening. Planning Commission meeting of February 21st, 2024 is called to order. The Planning Commission meeting is being broadcasted live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U versus Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high definition on the city's webpage, glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com/myglendale, and on Apple TV Roku and Amazon Fire device using a free app called Screen Weaver and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. Meetings are also archived on the city website for viewing anytime at glendaleca.gov/agencies. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting the questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person. Current planning commission agendas are available by visiting our website at www.glandaleca.gov. Roll call, please.
Sure. Commissioner Turakjian.
Here.
Commissioner Fuentes.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here. No, sorry. Wrong.
Commissioner Minasian.
Here.
And then Commissioner Shabazian.
Yes, here.
Okay, thanks.
Can we have the report regarding posting of the agenda?
Sure. The agenda for the February 21st, 2024 regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission was posted on Wednesday, February 14th, 2024 on the bulletin board outside of City Hall.
Thank you. And approval minutes from December 6th? We have two of those. The first one is from December 6th. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
I'll second it.
Thank you. And the one for January 17th?
Some move.
I'll second.
Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is oral communications. I do not see any cards here. We'll move to the next item. Board and Commission member comments. Do we have any of our commissioners that have any comments that would like to make this time? No comments. We don't have any old business. The first new business is item A, 246 North Jackson Street, street vacation case number 191B. Can we have the staff report, please, on presentation? Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Shabazian, Commissioners and members of the public. My name is Cassandra Pruitt. I'm the case planner for this project at 246 North Jackson. This is a street vacation in conjunction with the project to demolish the existing three units on site and build an 11-unit density bonus project with one very low-income unit. I just realized the slides aren't up, so let me get that.
Thank you.
It's important to note that the Glendale Municipal Code Street Vacations Chapter requires this project to be brought before the Planning Commission for one purpose only, which is to make a finding of conformity with the general plan. If the finding is made, the project will then be brought before the City Council to decide whether the proposed street vacation will be approved. The project site is located in Glendale's city center neighborhood at the southeast corner of East California Avenue and North Jackson Street. The street vacation is at the southeast corner of the intersection and the northwest corner of the property. The applicant is processing the street vacation in order to vacate a 1972 dedication that was in favor of the city for a 22-square-foot portion of the northwest corner of the lot and then to rededicate a 61-square-foot portion of the corner in order to accommodate an ADA-compliant wheelchair ramp. The original dedication of 22 square feet is indicated on this slide in blue with the number 1, and then the new dedication includes this portion plus the portion indicated with the number 2. The original wheelchair ramp is indicated in yellow, and the new ADA-compliant ramp is indicated in red. The ramp requires a four-foot backup clearance, which is what necessitates the additional dedication. The proposed street vacation complies, implicates three elements of the general plan: the land use element, the circulation element, and the housing element. In the land use element, the subject and surrounding sites are all classified as high-density residential, and this 11-unit density bonus housing project is consistent with that land use type. In the circulation element, Jackson Street and California Avenue are categorized as urban collectors. This type of street is designed to facilitate the safe movement of traffic and turning movements along the street. It also includes a goal to meet special transportation needs of the physically challenged. The street vacation and rededication to accommodate an ADA-compliant ramp is consistent with these aims. The housing element calls for increased housing development, including affordable housing. The vacation and rededication in order to achieve an ADA-compliant ramp will allow this 11-unit density bonus housing project with one very low-income affordable unit to move forward in its review process, and therefore, the proposal conforms to the housing element goals. For these reasons, the street vacation with the rededication to provide an ADA-compliant ramp conforms to the general plan, and the staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt a motion finding that the proposed vacation conforms with the general plan, subject to a condition of approval that a new expanded dedication be granted in favor of the city of Glendale to provide ADA-compliant public street access. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Sorry about that. Thanks for the presentation. We are going to open the public comment period, and we have one card from Art Simonian, who is the owner. Can you please come forward? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Planning Commissioners, City Attorney and staff. I'm Art Simonian. I'm the developer and applicant for the project. As staff presented, P-hole hearing officer approved this project and came on an appeal to this Planning Commission. Planning Commission approved it with a condition that we provide this ADA ramp at the corner, and that your decision was appealed to City Council. And again, City Council rejected the appeal, approved the project with that condition for us to provide this ADA-compliant ramp at the corner. And the 1972 easement is not adequate enough. It's only 21 square feet, as staff presented, and so we need to vacate that in order to record a new 61-square-foot easement in order to accommodate the required ADA ramp. As such, this is one of the final steps of us trying to meet that condition, and we will be going to council to perfect that. And it's been a long process, and we're hopeful that you will make that recommendation and that we can move forward. And I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Mr. Simonian. Any questions from Mr. Simonian? No questions. Thank you, sir. I don't see any cards up. Do we have any callers for this item?
No, we do not.
All right, thank you for that. Public comment period is closed. Commissioners, do you have any questions from staff?
I just have one quick question. Just out of curiosity, how come this detail wasn't addressed the first time it came around to the Planning Commission? And why did it come around the second time if the easement is that old? Just from my own knowledge.
When the project first came around, it did contemplate that they would need to do to process the street vacation, but that's done as a separate process, and it was, it was going to be a condition of approval for the building permit. It really just needs to be completed before the building permit is issued, so...
Let me make an announcement. If there was a caller and they got dropped, try calling back if you have a comment, and we can wait a few moments. But, sorry, I'll let you, Cassandra, go through.
Okay, so hopefully I answered the question.
Yeah, thank you.
The applicant did state that part of his team was going to be calling in, so it might be, that was the applicant's attorney, right? So I guess we'll see when.
Thank you for that. Let's just wait a few seconds. Do you see any callers?
If we could just briefly confirm that there are no callers or if the caller was the applicant's attorney.
Of course. We can, we can take a few moments. Sorry, Commissioner Turakjian, I kind of cut through your conversation.
It's no worries. I got the answer I needed.
Thank you. While we're reading on this, just another question. Is this a condition that was put by the Public Works Department on the project?
No.
Okay.
The applicant is processing this in order to make an adjustment to their floor area, and it, I'm sorry, their lot size, which affects the density calculation. But it's, they just needed to process it before they got the building permit. When it went to council, it was added as a condition of approval, but it would have had to have been done anyway.
Thank you for that. We apologize for the technical difficulties. Okay. I think they are trying to confirm that. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
So we do have two calls on hold.
Then in that case, if there are no other questions, we'll reopen the public comment. Let's go ahead and do that. Thank you.
Okay. Richard McDonald, you're on the air. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to speak.
Mr. McDonald, can you hear us? We cannot hear you.
It's possible that he might also be the second caller on hold.
Okay. Let's try.
Okay. So we'll drop this one.
Hello?
Hi, Richard. You're on, you're live on the air. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Richard McDonald, applicant's counsel. Just wanted to be available in case you had any questions on this. As Art explained, this is an administrative step in the process, consistent with the condition of approval imposed by the City Council when they approved the project. But I'm happy to answer any questions. I think he explained the process that we're going through, and I want to thank staff for all of their help as well.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Are there any questions from the caller? No questions. Thank you. And no other callers? Then we'll officially close public comments. Any comments? Commissioners, do we have a motion?
Ready.
I just want to make one comment, quick comment. I remember the rendering of the building. It's a beautiful building. It's perfect for that neighborhood. We need to revive that area of the Glendale, so best of luck to you.
Was that a, was that a motion?
No.
Okay, sounds great. Go ahead.
So I'll move the approval.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Can we have a roll call, please? Thank you.
Ms. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Minasian?
Yes.
Mr. Turakjian?
Yes.
And Ms. Shabazian?
Yes. And I actually wanted to note the same. I really like that project. It's a beautiful project. I remember it being transit-oriented development. We needed in Glendale, I agree, and we need more of those. So, good luck, sir. Thank you. Do we need to read the motion? Or we're, I think we should be okay.
No. As long as it was the motion that was handed to you.
Yes.
Motion in our hands.
Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is case number PZC00042023. Can we have the project description and presentation? Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Tonight, we're going to go through a series of zoning code amendments that are proposed. My name's Vista Zadi. I'm the planner that's been working on this with our staff. Just by way of providing some background, on August 23rd of 2022, staff presented a series of proposed zoning code changes to the City Council in order to streamline some of our existing processes so that they are simpler, more predictable, and more efficient. Most of these changes will relate to smaller projects that often have minimal impacts to existing neighborhoods. Council directed staff to initiate amendments to the zoning code regarding several items. First, to eliminate the 4-5-6 setback rule in single-family additions; to modify parking requirements for single-family additions; to allow the in-kind replacement of existing non-conforming structures; modify parking requirements for auto retailers; allow concurrent application review; modify the design review exemption thresholds; and allow second-story additions to go through administrative design review, or ADR. Staff is also including a series of miscellaneous code cleanups, mainly grammatical and typographical corrections as well as updating some cited code sections to be consistent. So just before I start, I can go through my entire presentation or we can take this topic by topic for questions and discussion. I'm not sure if you guys have a preference.
I think we can go through the entire presentation. Thank you.
No, I'm kidding.
We'll take more notes.
All right. So the first item is the existing 4-5-6 interior setback rule. Currently, the code has different setback requirements in the R1R and R1 single-family zones only, and that's for additions and new construction. Right now, if an addition to a house built before May 2nd, 1991 is proposed, the minimum required interior setback is dependent on the overall height of the project. So if your height is 20 feet or less, it's a four-foot setback. If your height's between 20 feet and up to 30 feet, it's a five-foot minimum setback, and the overall height exceeding 30 feet is a six-foot setback, whereas new construction is just 10 feet in the R1R zone, six feet in the R1 zone. This standard, it is complex without a sufficient benefit justifying the complexity. There is, there's a minor difference visually between 4, 5, and 6 feet when it comes to taller house. It can encourage houses also to be built in line with existing walls, which often results in long, straight section of walls, which is a design feature discouraged in our guidelines. Also, additions that propose an increase in height and/or number of stories become more challenging regardless of where the addition is. As an example, an increase in height from a house that was under 20 feet to one that is now greater than 20 feet would also require the existing walls to be removed if they do not meet that five-foot setback requirement that's now being triggered. This in turn can result in challenges for homeowners who often have to This in turn can result in challenges for homeowners who often have to go through a variance, which is, you know, routinely approved. It also can result in demolition issues for the existing residents, where demolition exceeds 50% of the outside wall and roof area, which then classifies the entire project as new construction, requiring DRB, and usually triggering other zoning requirements. The proposed change would get rid of this double standard for newer versus older homes. We are recommending that additions and new construction be required to have a 10-foot interior setback in the R1R zone, like new construction does now, and a six-foot interior setback in the R1 zone. All other setback requirements for single-family development will remain as is, including streetfront and street-side requirements. None of that will be changing. Okay, so parking requirements for single-family additions. This is the next item. So currently, our code requires that any addition of square footage to a single-family house trigger, trigger the parking requirements. So if you have a non-conforming parking situation, such as a one-car garage, and you want to add, you know, square footage to your house, whether you're adding 50 square feet, 200 square feet, 900 square feet, it triggers the parking requirement. Not many owners can often meet that, and it can be prohibitive based off the costs associated with it. We also would like to just bring to your attention that a state law was recently enacted regarding additions to single-family residences and local agencies being restricted in applying parking requirements to those. So this would be consistent with that recently adopted state law as well. What we are recommending is creating a new subsection in our code so that any lot with only one dwelling unit, so single-family properties only, where any addition of floor area is exempt from bringing parking up to compliance with code. And again, this will be consistent with recent state law. Just as a side note, you know, when this first went to council, we recommended 300 square feet within a 10-year term. Council's direction was no size limit or timing limitations, so that's what's in the adopted ordinance. I would like to modify what's in the report based off the state law. We were going to look for your direction on whether the size should be limited to 800 square feet, like an, like an accessory dwelling unit. But based off recent state law, we can't do that anyways, so don't need to worry about that discussion. As far as single-family, this will also tie into some modifications to parking requirements for historic resources. Currently, an addition of floor area up to 25% of the existing square footage is exempt from parking requirements. Currently, or sorry, this can often result in significant changes to a site with a historic resource. Many of them are proposing additions larger than that 25%, which triggers the parking requirement. Usually, those changes involve demolition or construction of a new garage, which could also require additional environmental review, as well as approval from the Historic Preservation Commission. This code section is being amended for allowing any addition to a historic resource without requiring the parking to be brought into compliance. And for historic resources, this could include single-family development, multifamily, non-residential, and the like, as long as it's a historic resource. This change is also going to better define what a historic resource is, and that would be more consistent with other language and sections of our code. Historic resource includes properties listed in the Glendale Register of Historic Resources, identified as a contributor to a pending or designated district, or identified as eligible for listing in the Glendale Register in a survey that has been adopted by city council. So that'll be better defined in the change as well. The next item is related to non-conforming design features on a property, specifically structures. Overtime development and design standards change typically to prevent an undesirable outcome or better implement community goals. Properties that don't meet these new development and design standards are considered legal non-conforming. Some common examples of non-conforming structures could include outdoor decks on a single-family residence. It can also include exterior staircases on a multifamily residence, and those are the most, you know, common examples that we have. Often, these properties are older developments, and these features are failing or structurally compromised, but also integral to the property's functionality and safety. Under current code, there are no exceptions for in-kind replacements of these legal non-conforming structures. Applicants and homeowners can only pursue minor repairs. They would have to be brought into compliance with current code if they are being replaced, and that can include setbacks in lot coverage, as well as design review approval. This has resulted in time and cost challenges for applicants that may have structural safety or hazardous conditions on their property, and it could be a deterrent to them improving it. It could also just, you know, result in additional delays in an unsafe condition on a property. The proposed change will amend Section 3060040, which discusses non-conforming buildings and structures to allow for voluntary reconstruction and in-kind replacement of a non-conforming structure only. The replacement must be necessary for proper maintenance, safety reasons, or to comply with a governmental regulation, and it must be rebuilt in substantially the same manner, to the same dimensions, and with the same materials and design elements. Some key points I just want to bring to your attention. This, this provision applies to structures only, not buildings, and structures are defined in our zoning code as anything constructed for which a permit is required that has a foundation but no roof. And again, the deck and the outdoor staircase are the most common examples where we see this. Owners would have to demonstrate that the replacement is necessary, and it only allows for like, like, it only allows like-for-like replacement, so under no circumstance would it allow for an expansion of the non-conforming structure. The next item is related to parking requirements for the car dealerships. Currently, the code requires that space used for vehicle inventory be counted towards the square footage of the use, and it must be parked. Essentially, the code is requiring parking, where parking is being proposed for vehicle inventory, and the off, the requirement is often more than is needed for the use. Applicants are typically required then to file for a parking reduction permit, and those are routinely granted. The proposed change would amend, amend Section 30.32060, which deals with how we calculate parking requirements. So that parking structures used for vehicle inventory only for auto retailers are not considered floor area for parking purposes. These vehicle inventory spaces are typically above-ground parking structures, which will continue to be regulated through our existing design review requirements, as well as FAR requirements. There's also one error in the draft ordinance and staff report I just want to bring to your attention. They reference a change to the definition of gross floor area, and that is incorrect. That is outdated and not going to change. So gross floor area will still be counted for vehicle inventory and not change it, like it says in the draft ordinance. The next item is concurrent review. Currently, the code does not allow concurrent review of planning and building entitlements. Rather, applications have to be submitted in succession. The result is longer project review times and delays. First, applicants must obtain approval of any necessary planning entitlements, such as a variance or conditional use permit, and wait for that 15-day appeal process to end. Then applicants can submit their application for design review. They must then obtain approval of that and wait again for the 15-day appeal process to end. Finally, once all of that is complete, they can proceed to submitting their building permit application. These steps can be important measures to ensure projects meet all necessary requirements before plan check. However, for most projects, there can be minimal or no changes necessary for the proposal to comply. The proposed amendment would add a new section to 3040, which discusses our application filing requirements and procedures, and it would be amended to allow for concurrent review of land use permits and building plan check. Under, under these new provisions, applicants would be allowed to submit concurrently if they submit a hold harmless agreement, recognizing that by submitting for all applications, they're doing so at risk, and that planning entitlements and design review applications could be denied, or their approval could result in design changes that could require new submittals or additional fees. Allowing concurrent review is a common practice in other cities, and this change can lead to a reduction in overall project review times, as well as successful permit issuance. So the next one is kind of a big one. We're going to get into design review exemptions for single-family. Currently, the code requires improvements to existing single-family houses that require a building permit to also require design review if the changes are visible from the street. Generally, what is visible can be subjective. It depends on the viewing angle, type of improvements, and site-specific conditions. Essentially, it's reviewed on a case-by-case basis. For single-family, additions that meet the guidelines and are within certain square footage thresholds can be eligible for a design review exemption. Amending this section could substantially reduce review time for projects that are typically minor in nature, but currently subjected to a lengthier design review process. The proposed change, based off council direction, would amend Section 3047020 as it relates to design review applicability for existing single-family development. The size of the addition could be larger than the existing thresholds if certain criteria are met. The criteria is it must be located towards the rear 50% of the building. It could not result in a change in a facade that directly faces a street. It cannot increase the height and/or additional, add additional stories. It could not exceed the height of any of the existing roof lines, and it must be architecturally compatible with the existing house through colors and materials, roof style, and general architectural style and treatment. Zoning standards will still apply to these projects, including floor area landscaping and lot coverage. The notwithstanding clause we currently have in our code, this is a clause that essentially gives us the authority to require a design review board for projects that don't meet our guidelines and don't meet the criteria for an exemption. So what is the rear 50%? We've prepared a few diagrams to kind of illustrate what that would mean. In the code amendment, it's being defined as the average distance from the building wall corner closest to the streetfront property line and the building wall corner closest to an interior property line, measured along a straight line. So in these examples, you know, the dash lines around the border are the property lines. The solid lines are the, they illustrate the distance between the building wall corners. So in these examples, corner A is the building corner closest to the streetfront property line. Corner B is the building corner closest to an interior property line. We then would take whatever that average is, and you would essentially draw a line and figure out what that, that rear 50% is, and that kind of tells you where your addition could go. We've included the yellow portions to highlight possible options for an addition, taking into account also setback requirements. With the setback changes, most of these additions would, would be directly behind the house anyways. We also prepared the first diagram. You'll see two colors, blue and red. This is a common situation on 50 by 150 lots, which are also standard size, where you ha, you could potentially have two building corners to use. We did run some, do some examples, and this is, was the best one to illustrate that that rear 50% doesn't really change substantially if this situation were to come up. And these are some more examples. The first one is a corner lot, which it's not uncommon for these to come in for an addition. Again, this illustrates how that rear 50% would be defined. The yellow area highlights where the addition could potentially go on the property. It could not go beyond what is being shown without requiring formal design review, again, because the addition could not directly face the street. The second one is an example of, you know, things that we normally would see in hillsides. It's an irregular-shaped lot. It has a curved front property line. You know, the building footprint is, that's there right now is, is at an angle. And this could, would kind of illustrate what your options would be for development. And when we think about where, what's directly facing the street, that's more or less what these green lines would show on the, on the, on the slide. Everything in yellow is an area where the addition could potentially go and not be considered as directly facing a street. The next change has to do with authority for administrative design review. In an effort to streamline certain processes, in 2013, administrative design review was first adopted. ADR is essentially a director-level review of a project, not eligible for an exemption, and in single-family, that's typically large additions. Some examples of common requests that we receive today are a 950-square-foot addition at the rear of the house, or a 300-square-foot addition to the front, and even expansions of existing second stories. Through ADR, public notices are mailed out, and the site is posted. Staff prepares a report that the public can access online and submit written comments on during the 10-day notice period. Once that's over, a decision is rendered, and we do provide responses in the Record of Decision to any comments that we receive during the comment period. Typically, right now, the additions that involve an increase in the number of stories, we do send to the design review board, as opposed to taking them through the ADR process, although it may not be necessary for all second-story additions. Based on council direction and our recommendation to them in 2022, we're recommending that certain second-story additions be eligible for ADR, as opposed to having to go through the board. The proposed amendment would codify that certain applications for an increase in the number of stories could be reviewed through ADR that meet specific criteria. Those criteria is that the new story is located at the rear 50% of the building, and that the addition is architecturally compatible with the existing dwelling through colors, materials, roof style, and the general architectural style and treatment. Projects that do not meet these criteria would be required to go through design review board for review and approval at that point. Just another amendment to this section that has to do more with cleanups is clarifying that ADR could be used for decks that have a maximum overall height of eight feet or greater. Currently, the code is not clear that that is an option. The way the code's written right now requires these to go through DRB. But these are more like single-family additions. They're typically, you know, minor in nature, and we usually don't get a lot of comments on them. The ADR process would still allow for that comment to, process to occur, just in a different way. The next items are the miscellaneous code cleanups. The draft ordinance includes a series of cleanups, mainly typos and grammar errors that we've discovered over the last few years while processing cases. There's also outdated citations to different parts of Title V, Title 16, and Title 30, so we're just trying to clean that up. We're also proposing amendments related to seismic retrofits, as well as design review applicability when the additions within an existing envelope. So the first one has to do with parking stall dimensions and seismic retrofits. So staff has received an increased number of applications for seismic retrofitting of existing buildings throughout the city in recent years. Typically, these are necessary to address existing structural deficiencies of these buildings, necessary for life safety in the event of an earthquake. For many multifamily properties, the necessary upgrades are typically in the lower-level parking parking areas, and they involve widening the existing structural columns to reinforce the openings at the ground floor, so buildings can safely withstand lateral forces that are generated by earthquakes. The most common request for these is for existing soft-story buildings, which we do have a lot of in Glendale, where the first floor typically has large openings for garages or tuck-under parking, and the residential units are on the upper floors. These buildings are older and often more susceptible to damage during an earthquake, and typically, these buildings do not meet current parking stall dimensions, and widening the columns impacts those stalls even further. For these life safety upgrades, applicants are often forced to file for variance or administrative exception applications, which are also routinely granted. Staff is recommending a change to the parking chapter, so modifications to existing stall dimensions can deviate from the minimum requirements when proposed in conjunction with a seismic retrofit and determined necessary by the building officials. So that determination isn't made blindly. We would confer with building and safety staff to make sure that this is required, and this is the way to do it. This will help eliminate the additional time and cost associated with the planning entitlement and streamline their review. The last cleanup has to do with design review exemptions on mezzanines, basements, and attics. The proposed change would clarify that design review exemptions could apply for multifamily, commercial, or industrial buildings where the scope of work is within the existing building envelope. The most common example of this is a mezzanine addition, especially in an industrial building, or conversions of basements or attic areas. And again, this change would not apply to single-family properties, but it would apply to multifamily and non-residential uses. We are recommending that the Planning Commission recommend adoption of these amendments to city council. I'm available for any questions. I'm sure there are plenty. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I would like to do the public comments first, and then we all go to the questions. And with that, we have one card here. Mr. Alan Durham. Thank you.
Chair Shafazian, members of the commission, city staff, thank you for letting me speak. I'm Alan Durham. Just to let you know, I'm on the board at the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association. I'm also that association's representative on the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council, but I'm not here today representing either of those groups. I'm here simply as a concerned homeowner. My comments on the 456 interior setback rule for single-family additions being totally eliminated. And I'd like to urge the commission not to eliminate this rule in its entirety, since it will require owners of older pre-1991 homes to have six- or 10-foot setbacks, even for very small additions. I agree the 456 rule was too complicated, the way it tied to the height of, you know, a structure, and that those height limits should be eliminated. But it's difficult for owners of older homes to provide deeper setbacks for small additions at the rear of their homes. And to give my example, I have a two-story home. There's a really small half-bath in the rear corner. We'd like to expand that into a full-size bathroom. It's not going to be an addition that would take very much square footage, but we would have to push out. There's not enough room now to make it into a full-size bath. It's very small. But to have to... We don't have a six-foot setback currently. The house was built in 1936 with different setback rules. To have to come in four or more feet from the corner where the existing bathroom is and put the bathroom, you know, into the interior of the lot, it would just make the design and the... In terms of integrating it with the rest of the house in back, would make the design and logistics extremely difficult. So I would like to suggest that maybe the existing rule would allow older homes to maintain their existing setbacks for small additions, not necessarily major additions, but say, maybe some kind of square-foot limit, 300 square feet, I mean, whatever's appropriate. But it just seems like smaller additions shouldn't be required to conform with current setbacks. It just makes small additions, bathrooms, whatever at the back of the house extremely hard to do, and much more expensive in terms of cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other commenter... Comment... Comments on the phone?
No callers or listed.
All right. Public comment is closed. Let's... I know there are questions. I saw everyone taking notes, so... Questions from the staff?
I'll start it off, I guess. Sticking to the 456 rule, just out of curiosity, where did the 10-foot figure come from? Is that something that was taken from other cities? And wouldn't instituting a 10-foot setback decrease flexibility for what owners can do on lots within the city?
So that six-foot, 10-foot setback comes from our existing code standards for new construction and additions to houses built after May, I think, 1991 or 1992. That's where those numbers came from, and it's essentially we're getting rid of this nuanced 456 and just keeping everything the same in the zone, whether you're a new house or an addition.
So if we were to approve this, if we're to go on the speaker's comments on his house, for example, would that need to go through a kind of a variance acceptance process in that case, instead of just a typical approval?
We do have an administrative exception process to allow people to build in line for minor additions. That's an existing process that the... A person could go through for something like this. You could also recommend, you know, to the council that we look into carve-outs for specific situations. It does get complicated, and it's difficult to build those carve-outs into the code in consideration of the different types of development throughout the city. And it was something we considered and looked into, but it becomes too complicated and doesn't really work for everybody.
So is the primary reasoning, then, for this amendment simply to decrease the complexity of the 456 rule? Because as currently written in the code, it's too complicated, given the differing heights and the differing setbacks and requirements for those prior to 1991, and just bring it in conformity with anything that's a new construction?
Essentially, yes, and this would... This will help many of the applications that we have come through our door.
Okay. Does anyone else want to comment on this one? Yeah?
Just for clarification, the administrative exception to kind of continued existing building line for a small addition, you have like a maximum square footage, just so that the...
There isn't... There's not a maximum square footage for the AE to build in line. The administrative exception process inherently is for minor projects, minor additions, and that is what we use it for. It's more a tool for homeowners to use and not require the full-blown variance, but it's to allow for these minor additions.
Did you... Did you get that? Okay, good. Thank you.
I have a question regarding the last slide that you had, or two slides before the... Regarding the code cleanup. Can you go back to the slides? The very last two, I think, was it?
If you don't mind me, Commissioner, before we move on from the subject, I actually had one... I had a question going through the... This... Actually, that was one part that I wanted to ask questions. So I don't... So looking at this, I don't know, and my question was, I don't know what was the reason that we made the decision. You kind of went over it, and you said that, you know, to make it a bit easier. Reading the previous code, it felt like... I mean, I'm just reading it. I don't know how it is in a... When it comes to the city. But it felt like it was pretty straightforward, as if it's 20 feet tall, it's four feet of setback. If it's... If it's 30, I think it's five, and more, it's six, if I recall that correctly, right? Let me see. So four feet setback if it's 20, five feet setback over 20 feet, less than 30, and then more than 30 would be six foot. So what was... I'm just curious to know what the complication was there. I was trying to understand it. Was it... Does this... Is it for buildings that might be two stories?
The challenge with this rule is when an increase in height is proposed, which is also common on many of these older properties. That increase in height, the 456 rule would apply, but it could apply to what's there on-site currently, and in those instances, people are forced to demo portions of their existing house to bring it into compliance with that 456 rule. If not, they have to go through a variance, and that was the main intent behind simplifying the rule.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. And then just one question that Commissioner Fuentes asked. The admin exception is usually reviewed by the zoning administrator? Is that what it is?
It's subject to review by the Director of Community Development.
Okay, so it's a request that can be submitted to Planning Division and reviewed by them. So it's a quicker process than going through the...
Yeah, we affectionately call them mini variances. They have similar findings, and they're designed for these smaller projects to not require a hearing, but the same analysis is done.
Okay. I really appreciate your explanation, because I was a bit confused on that. Thank you so much. And then if you don't have any other questions on this, 456, we can move on. I know there are other questions. Please go ahead. Sorry, I cut you off.
No worries. I know everything that we talked about earlier is all mostly about the single-family homes and all that. This cleanup on the... Can owners use on the duplex or triplex on the garage?
If it's a structural upgrade necessary for seismic retrofitting only. This exception is being... It really is going to apply to the soft-story buildings. That's where this issue comes up, typically on like detached structures or garages. The way to reinforce them structurally doesn't involve impacting the stall dimensions like this does. But again, any... Anything necessary for life safety, as determined by the building official, for a seismic retrofit could be addressed through this provision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Trachon, I believe you have more questions. We didn't let you finish.
Regarding the concurrent review portion, I'm just curious, could you guys give, if there are examples of other cities that have implemented it, and do we have any tangible evidence of an improvement in timeline? Because on paper, it sounds like it would achieve that. I guess the only question I would have on it would be, you know, some applicants may apply, and then they would need to kind of go through this process, then restart all over again, rather than kind of have checks throughout the way, you know, if they need to make tweaks to their application as they go on.
Yeah. Commissioner, members of the Planning Commission, so I know the City of L.A. has a similar process, where they do allow concurrent processing for building permit review, and that's probably the biggest city that does it. I'm sure there's a few others out there. But like, for instance, we recently had a large studio project on San Fernando Road, and the thing that came out of that, we allowed them to go into construction, because right now, the director has the ability to allow that under certain circumstances. We're suggesting we extend that to some other buildings. It actually speeded up the process through plan check, because they determined structurally the design wasn't going to work. So they actually had to modify their design, and we hadn't gone to the design review board yet, so it saved a lot of time from them going in the plan check and then realizing, we can't actually build that, and then us taking that then back to the design review board, which is a much more longer process than it would be for the plan check. But on these larger buildings, a plan check's due to take considerably longer than like a single-family or multifamily project. So we're trying to get them in the ground quicker, and a lot of these developers have a ton of money invested in these projects that are pretty timely in terms of what they're having to do. Like, the one in San Fernando is for a large studio project, and that's something that the city is more interested in getting into the city that has higher-paying jobs, and they have local jobs they can offer and stuff like that. So it really helps both on the building permit side in terms of getting the structural couch worked out, and also could even save time, in this case, on the design review end. But there's... I think there's... We're not really considering this for small additions to houses, because it just doesn't make sense, but we're really talking about larger projects where there's a considerable time savings, and these, maybe some of our larger downtown projects that are coming through that are 500, 600 units. It would save them time just making sure the engineers got it all up to speed and the design matches what can actually be constructed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I do have one question. On page 16 of the ordinance, this is the red-line version, item 2A talks about the retaining walls, and then it talks about retaining walls that are three feet and then an under, and then retaining walls that are between three feet to five feet. And then anything over, it refers to Section 30.30.01OB. I couldn't find that section. I was just curious to know what happens to retaining walls that are higher than five? And this is page 16 of the red-line version, item 2A.
So essentially, there are very few instances where your retaining wall could exceed that five-foot height maximum, and that's what that code section spells out. This mod... This change in particular, it really is a cleanup item, because that eight-foot being referenced is not accurate. There isn't something in our code in that situation that would allow the eight-foot wall. It would only allow it to go up to five feet. That's why we're recommending the correction. It was brought to our attention when one of the planners was reviewing a project.
Okay, so what happens in a case that we do need a... I can see that in hillsides, where you need a bigger, a taller retaining wall to, let's say, hold the land behind. So what happens in that case?
If you don't meet the criteria in 30.30, then you are required to file for a variance or, you know, an administrative exception if you fall within 20% deviation of whatever the height requirement is.
Okay. And where is Section 30.30.01?
It is in the municipal code online.
Okay, so it's not in this ordinance? It's a completely...
No, no, no. This is really just cleaning up the language in this setback exception to be consistent with what are retaining walls in 30.30 discuss.
So, and I'm, again, I want to know what... If someone needs a retaining wall that's taller than five, and I can already think of properties that I've seen throughout the city that might need it, because they're hillside, and they might be sitting below, and there's a property just above them. They would need to go through a variance, even if the soil needs to be...
It is possible. There are also, you know, requirements in our hillsides when it comes to retaining walls in excessive height, so there are different... There are different regulations at play there. That would be a whole other item that council would need to initiate amendments on. The way the code currently stands, it's very rare that you can go over that five feet. It really depends on where you're putting the wall, what the slope condition is, and then we also look at the visual impacts of these. Typically, the taller walls don't have visibility, and that's where the exception in the code is built in.
If I could fucking add to that, you can actually do a succession of walls. It doesn't have to just be one tall wall. So what we're trying to encourage is more of a terrorist look, rather than someone just putting one giant wall in and having a giant void space between that. So for design purposes, we're trying to get, you know, a succession of walls separated by five feet in order to get the wall height down.
Got it.
So that's kind of typically how we would see that issue addressed.
Okay.
This was just a flat-out mistake in the code that was just incorrect.
Okay, I got it. So if we have a... So in what I am... I guess what my concern or question is, is a completely separate ordinance, sounds like the hillside ordinance, and Section 30.30 addresses anything that would fall. This is more for flatter areas?
Yeah, we're really talking about like the interior lots. The retaining walls behind a structure can actually go much higher than that.
Okay. Thank you.
And then just in that same vein, there's actually going to be an additional correction there. It says at least three feet and but under eight feet, or five feet. The end but would be corrected, three... To be three feet and under five feet. So the but would be removed. That's a typo.
You know, just asking, maybe we should add something that says C-section... that says C-section 30.30 of the municipal code. Um, again, I kept looking in here and I couldn't find it. Um, just, just the way I think that would be easier for, for people to find, um, where, where it would be.
So just to help appease that, online, which is where everyone can access this, these are actually linked to the code section, so you, you click on it, yeah, and it'll send you there.
That makes life easier. Thank you so much.
Uh, just for, are you suggesting that we kind of add that to this?
No, that's fine. If that's, that's the case.
We can do that just as easily as well.
If it's that easy, then, then that's what it would, I, I actually don't think most people print out.
Yeah, we try to minimize the, the volume of paper we're handing out, so it's, so it's trying to help you guys focus on what areas we're changing.
Of course, thank you. Uh, I don't have any questions. Any of my colleagues, any questions? All right, um, any comments? Thank you for drawing that. That's exactly what, what I was asking.
That's it.
Yeah. Do we have any comments? Any? Do we have a motion that we want to entertain?
I'll make your motion.
Go for it.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second, but we, but, uh, I think there, you said that there were some typos that were going to be, um, changed, that we were just, we just found that about?
Yeah, there are some typos that will be changed in the final version we take to council.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second with the changes that will be made.
Yep.
All right. Can we have a roll call, please?
Sorry. Commissioner Trachian.
Yes.
Commissioner Fuentes.
Yes.
Commissioner Minasian.
Yes.
And Commissioner Shabazian.
Yes. Uh, next item on the agenda is community development department updates. Do we have any updates?
Um, sure, just a real quick update. Um, our March 6th meeting, um, looks like we're trying to do a joint meeting between you all and the Sustainability Commission um, to review the bicycle transportation plan. So, um, at this point, it looks like it's going to be, uh, 6 o'clock, not 5 o'clock, and it'll be held at the council chamber. So just keep that in mind when you get the agenda announcement.
The 6th, you said?
It would, March 6th, yeah.
Thank you. And last item, adjournment. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.